Good evening, everyone, and thank you all for joining us tonight for our presentation of Paper Monuments Charlottesville. My name is Sneha Patel, and I'm the Creative Director of Communications for the School of Architecture at UVA. Tonight's event is a partnership between the School of Architecture and the TomTom Foundation. And I'd like to start by thanking a few individuals at TomTom who have been working closely with us to bring tonight's event to you all. Miles Wood, Ben Wilks, and Chelsea Woodfolk. It's been great working with them, and we hope to continue to this partnership into the future. This year's TomTom's month-long virtual Cities Rising Summit has been able to offer an array of incredible interactive talks, discussions, and presentations across critical themes that are free and open to all. We're really excited to share this special session tonight to kick off Week Four of the summit, which is dedicated to the theme titled "Yes, Community Arts Are Essential." Tonight, we'll start with a presentation framing the conception of Paper Monuments as a public art and public history project that first started in New Orleans. And then we'll learn a little bit more about its iteration here in Charlottesville. The presentation will be followed by a Q and A, where we'll ask you all to type your questions into the Q and A panel at the bottom of your screen for our speakers to address, and you can feel free to go ahead and type your questions at any time during the presentation. To begin, it's my pleasure to introduce tonight one of our presenters, Elgin Cleckley. Elgin is an Assistant Professor of Architecture and Design Thinking at the University of Virginia. He teaches design research studios, seminars, and foundational university-wide design thinking courses that incorporate empathic design methodologies, of which he'll be sharing more about with you tonight. Before joining UVA in 2016, Elgin was a design coordinator at the Ontario Science Center in Toronto, producing architecture, public art, graphic design, and exhibitions for Canada and around the world. He's currently the Design Director of the Equity Center, a UVA Democracy Initiative for the Redress of Inequity Through Community Engaged Scholarship. And a few select projects developed as part of his practice, Empathic Design, includes the Charlottesville Memorial for Peace and Justice, the Darrington Neighborhood Plan in Jefferson Park in Lynchburg, and the University of the South. Elgin has received many individual and collaborative awards, recognitions, and grants, including a 2020 National ACSA Architecture Education Award for Diversity Achievement, a 2020 Faculty Community Engagement Award from UVA, a 2020 Dunbarton Oak Mellon Fellowship in Urban Landscape Studies, and a 2019 Armsteed Robinson Recognition Award for faculty in recognition of outstanding faculty who have contributed to diversity, equity, and inclusion, and have had a positive impact on the Black experience at the university. In addition to the commitment and passion he brings to all his work on equity across grounds and in the Charlottesville community, Elgin is especially known for the significant positive impact he has had on the lives of his students. I warmly welcome Elgin. We'll introduce the rest of our presenters this evening.
Thank you very much, Sneha, and thank you to the TomTom Foundation. We'd like to welcome participants from the Cities Rising Summit, the School of Architecture, community, and guests for inviting us to share with you this evening. We acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land I speak from and from where our work originates, the Monaka Nation, and pay our respects to the elders, past and present. I'm pleased to introduce our speakers for this evening, starting with Sue Mobley. Sue Mobley is a New Orleans-based urbanist, organizer, and advocate. She's currently Senior Research Scholar at Monument Lab, Visiting Scholar at the Center for Art and Space at the Stuart Weitzman School of Design, the University of Pennsylvania, and Visiting Fellow for Arts and Culture at the American Planning Association, as well as Member of the New Orleans City Planning Commission. Sue served as Director of Advocacy at Colicate Design and was co-director of Paper Monuments, a public art and public history project that invited residents to imagine new monuments for New Orleans. Sue was formerly Public Programs Manager at the Small Center for Collaborative Design at Tulane School of Architecture. Sue holds a BA in Anthropology from Loyola University, New Orleans, and an MA in Political Science from the American University in Cairo. She's the author of Human Rights: Human Wrongs: Observation of Human Rights Law and Norms in United Nations Peacekeeping Operations, contributor to Remaking New Orleans: Beyond Exceptionalism and Authenticity, recently released by Duke University Press, and a contributor to Teachable Moments Using Public Art to Spark Dialogue and Confront Controversies forthcoming on Bloomsbury Press. I'll follow Sue detailing our collaboration for Paper Monuments Charlottesville, but then we'll hear from three outstanding UVA students from the Fall 2019 course for the work originates. First will be Omer Garashi. Omer is an architecture student here at UVA, graduating next year, and photographer originally from Khartoum, Sudan. His photography focuses on the emotionally moving yet ephemeral experiences within everyday urban life, often drowned out by the banal cliches suspected of cities, while his design work questions how interventions within the built environment can improve the human condition, mentally, emotionally, here and abroad. He's worked at Lear's Waisensoffel Architects in Boston with UVA's in-house design group where he assisted with the recent renovation of the Ace School's Fab Lab, and currently works for Low Tech in New York City. Outside of architecture, he volunteers with several nonprofits such as the Islamic Relief USA and Pious Projects of America, serving Muslim communities worldwide. Lauren Brown is an undergraduate architecture student here at UVA as well, graduating next year. She's also Vice President of the School's Chapter of the National Organization for Minority Architecture Students. She's also Student Research Assistant for the Google Inc-funded Workspace Futures headed by J.T. Bachmann and Katie Strannix, which seeks to investigate the spatial implication of race and implicit bias in the workplace. Lauren's artwork places an emphasis on Black beauty and empowerment, while her design work is interested in how empathy and cultural identity can be used to reclaim spaces traditionally exclusive of BIPOC and other marginalized communities in the built environment. Outside of studio, she serves as mentor to Black first-year and transfer students through UVA's Office of African-American Affairs, Peer Advisor Program, and as the undergraduate representative of the President's Task Force Committee for the ongoing Emmett Ivey Corridor Development at the university. Tristan Rakey is an undergraduate student at the UVA School of Engineering and Applied Sciences, the BS in Mechanical Engineering, the BS in Astronomy and Physics, graduating next year. He's also owner of Reed Clothing. Currently works as a data analyst for the Virginia Civic Engagement Table, a nonprofit coalition focusing on civic engagement and issue advocacy. Tristan's artwork claims that art as a concept represents a natural condition of humanity, while his design work emphasizes the contradictions of the society in which refuses its historicity. Reed specifically houses many of these inquiries focusing on fashion, music, photography, and painting. Outside of this, he serves as President of the Student Hip-Hop Organization and remains involved in a couple undergraduate research projects. So now I turn to, please turn it to you, Sue, and to share with us the genesis of Paper Monuments. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you. We...
I'll share my screen.
Okay. So in order to talk about Paper Monuments, it's important to talk about the context in which the project began. So we were a public art and public history project based in New Orleans that drew very heavily from the work of Monument Lab, based in Philadelphia. Unlike Monument Lab, which began in 2015, Paper Monuments began in 2017 with the removal of four Confederate monuments from our city. And like much of the country that has attempted to remove monuments or discuss history in recent years, for weeks, our streets looked like this. With Confederate, the Neo Confederates from across the country coming in to bring flags and anger into our streets and confront our citizens. Because we're New Orleans, it also looked like the other side. Our removal of the Lee statue from Lee Circle, I'm still calling former Lee Circle, was marked by a day-long block party and dry humor, a New Orleans characteristic, was present at all stages of the takedown, and in many ways offered the strongest rebuttal to that part of the context. But it's also important to talk about a larger context for New Orleans. Next slide. So what Paper Monuments took on was not just the Confederate context of the monuments that were removed, but also a much larger and in many ways more insidious context that is the tourism narrative of our city. That tells a story of New Orleans that is romanticized, that is narrow, and that is increasingly multiracial and multicultural by claiming a level of exception that it's perhaps not appropriate to claim. So for 100 years, New Orleans has been selling itself to the world as a place to come visit. And it's been selling itself with a string of approaches that ranged from the 1930s being about a business-oriented city of the future, which seems laughable now, to a shift by the 1980s as the city was more dependent on tourism and the Black middle class grew larger nationally, to a multicultural tourism that talked about racial identity in terms of New Orleans being different from the dichotomy that the rest of the country embraces. A place where racial mixing is part of a legacy of peaceful coexistence, a place where the grace and beauty of the architecture is rendered absent from the enslaved hands that built it. A place where music bubbles up from the streets, but musicians make starvation wages. So when we started out asking New Orleanians, what is an appropriate monument for New Orleans? Echoing Monument Lab, many of the answers that we were getting pulled on these tropes, pulled on the idea of a musical city, a food-centered city, a French Quarter-centered city. And we realized that in order to change what we were receiving, we both needed to ask a different question, and we needed to provide more history than what people were used to absorbing. Next slide. So for two years, we worked with scholars of the city, many of whom I had been working with for six or seven years at that point on an anti-exceptionalism project of New Orleans. And we paired them with local artists to create posters that told stories of the city that don't get told otherwise. And to propose monuments and create the space to propose monuments for Black and Brown histories, queer histories, working-class histories, for the people who don't get monuments built to them, but who are fundamental to shaping the city as we know it. And we used our downtown area to develop these posters at scale into a series of galleries that, over the course of a year, took up four city blocks, along with a number of scattered sites across the city. Next slide, please. So the reason that scattered sites are important is because as a small project with very little budget, we wanted to reach as many people as we could, both with the stories that we were telling and with the question that we were asking. And so we targeted existing networks, transit networks of buses and streetcars that still meet at Canal Street echoing the 1805 separation of the French city from the American, but rarely cross it. And because those crossings are transfers for spots, often a place in which our citizens are waiting 45 minutes for a bus. One of the fun parts about this project was the opportunity to use those galleries as advocacy points for changing our public transit network to be a little bit more efficient. We also relied on partners in the cultural and civic realm, from our incredible public libraries to galleries and gathering spots to ensure that we were reaching not just as many people as possible, but really targeting people who are often left out of public processes. Next slide. So over the course of two years, we collected almost 1,200 public proposals for monuments for things that people thought were worth remembering about the city, for stories they wanted to tell and see honored in public space. And they were incredible. The most powerful part of this exhibit of this project for me was not the exhibit of posters or the creation of three-dimensional artworks. It was reading what was important to the everyday people of my city and what stories they wanted to tell that I hadn't heard of, that wouldn't have been told otherwise. Next slide. So usually, when I talk about Paper Monuments, the first question that I get is, what's next? So for New Orleans, there is now a what's next. I'm currently leading, co-leading with Dr. Thomas Adams, a process by which the city is renaming what will now be 34 Confederate streets. And the process has been built under a city commission that is, for which we serve as expert panelists. And draws on Paper Monuments process. So out of a limited project around monuments, we are now naming multiple streets and providing opportunities to honor people who aren't normally honored. A chance to revisit the history of Reconstruction in the city and the tremendous influx of Black leadership into our Reconstruction government, many of whom were also Civil War veterans. The opportunity to honor those who stood up the first Black hospital in the city, who carry on cultural traditions that matter to us, who fought for a teachers' union in the 20s that was interracial, who fought to remove monuments in the 90s and shouted down David Duke as we all apparently must do at some point or another. Anyway. That's the introduction to Paper Monuments: New Orleans. And I was very lucky to work with Elgin and students to develop the early stages of Paper Monuments: Charlottesville. I'm incredibly impressed by the work that the students put forward, and I'm excited for you all to see it.
Thank you so much, Sue. Paper Monuments: Charlottesville emerges from decades of investigating identity, culture, history, memory, and place here at UVA when I was a student at the School of Architecture. Back then, a trip to Monticello or a venture around grounds gave no acknowledgement or acceptance in words or form of the full human settlement or experience in this built environment. Suppressed, hidden under the red-staining soil of these cultural landscapes under a singular narrative. This erasure, combined with Jefferson's Paradox of Liberty, magnified the lack of acknowledgement of the enslaved African-Americans that built this university, I thought. My educational and personal experience left me perplexed, wishing for a collective space to integrate these untold layers. At the time, I yearned for a supportive toolkit that influenced my design thinking, fostering inclusive and equitable futures. Yet, when I walked through the columns of the rotunda on graduation day, still perplexed on the true story of how it was built, descending to the flattened plains, which I also wondered how they were built, of the lawn into the future, I had a funny feeling that I'd be back. Next slide, please. Thank you, Sue. Since arriving back at UVA in 2016, I was excited to find a system of delivery, digital, analog, built, organizational, and methodologies well underway. This delivery system took Jefferson's paradox head-on, led by the President's Commission on Slavery in the university. In my first return weekend, I took the walking tour of enslaved African-Americans at the university using its audio component, saw new inclusive exhibitions in the rotunda, visited the Kitty Foster site by Walter Hood, the site of a freed African-American woman in a community called Canada on the South Lawn. I learned of the student, faculty, alumni, and community efforts to develop the memorial to enslaved laborers, which opened this year, and you can see the images here on the right, including a protest after the merger of George Floyd at the bottom corner. This led to the development of an exhibition mapping with the student team supporting the walking tour, allowing visitors to learn more of the materials enslaved utilized to build the Academical Village. This was installed in the West Old Room of the rotunda and the School of Architecture, and you can see that at the bottom left. Next slide, please. The complexities these past years, in this body, in this place, charge me to find a way to develop this shifting absence into productive result. I combine my decades of inclusive professional design experience, which includes two decades in Canada, as Sneha mentioned, in teaching to establish empathic design, pedagogy, initiative, and design practice. Pathic design utilizes an in-depth interdisciplinary research and skill-building look at empathy, supported by principles, themes, and methods. The outcomes charge design activation in academic, community, and professional contexts. Next slide, please. I'm thankful to the School of Architecture for the constant support of a series of courses that filled the void I once had. The suite of courses first introduced students all over the university to design and thinking, guided collaborations with James Van Roos, Hyland, and Professor Lisa Riley, all supported with funding by the Jefferson Trust. A current design research studio looks at the Great Northern Migration, a design response in the Grand Central Terminal's Vanderbilt Hall. With many thanks to Dean Ilah Berman, the Inclusion and Equity Committee guided by Barbara Brown Wilson and Sheila Crane, this set a visit from Sue Mobley and Brian Lee Jr. as speakers through the Dean's Forum Lecture in 2019. This event continued into Paper Monuments: Charlottesville, as Sue mentioned. It's part of a course called ARC 3560. You can see that listed here under Selected Teaching. 6D refers to the six areas of design I think of, I think of, and the absence and on the other side. Explore these lands and built environment, thinking of the spaces, systems, graphics, products, objects, and experiences, present and absent. 6D is a framework for analyzing and rethinking rebuilding, and it was used here at the Charlottesville Memorial for Peace and Justice. This is marking the lynching of John Henry James. This is the actual column piece from the National Memorial for Peace and Justice, next to the installed historical marker looking toward Monticello, toward the slave market across the street on the left, also next to the Jefferson Hotel in sight of the Confederate monuments behind and the courthouse in Courthouse Square. Next slide, please. This is what our syllabus looks like, and it consists of seven empathic design case studies, designs that connect, incorporate through form and process, understand and fully integrate identity, culture, history, memory, and place. Students experience this global syllabus using the 6D framework to introspect work of Ramire Bearden, Halloran Yu, the architects of the memorial here in town, the National Museum of African-American History and Culture, Tiffany Chung, Rachel White-Reed, Tadashi Kawamoto. That square in the center is where students bring their own syllabus entry, and we analyze using 6D before diving into two real-world projects. Next slide, please. We can see here creations that happen week by week from this year's class, where the collages become medium to explore. We set community agreements. We foster a supportive environment for being vulnerable, discussing the impacts of our research findings, also discussing the realities of our time and the intensity of this place and of this space. Supportive readings and class visits from designers of the work we investigate occur. Recently, Xena Howard from Perkins and Will joined the class to share her work on the National Museum of African-American History and Culture. This environment provides the open, supportive foundation students need to become empathic designers. Next slide, please. This year's real-world projects go back to the walks around town they started as a student, seeing things I couldn't have imagined at the time. September 12, 2020, after extensive community engagement process run by the Albemarle County Office of Equity and Diversity, of which Empathic Design participated, knowledge-building tours from Dr. Jalaine Schmidt, Dr. Andrea Douglas, and years of hard city and community work went to watch the At-Ready statue, a Confederate soldier, fly into the air from a crane, a very popular sight this summer. Watching this in person was surreal, thinking of all that led up to this moment, with the moment of racial reckoning, Monticello peering down in the background. As a class, we will develop concept designs for this site, sharing them with the office. Next slide, please. This year's class ends at Marcus David Peters Circle in Richmond, liberated by the people after the eight minutes and 46 seconds that stopped the world. Here, we will continue the empathic design thinking we started in the Fall 2019. We also experience here the community-driven empathic design well underway. Marcus David Peters was a teacher killed by Richmond police officer, naked and unarmed, having a mental health emergency in 2018 at the intersection of Highways 95 and 64 coming from Charlottesville. Plant in the Gardens, learn the loss of Black life in one-on-one designs at the base of the Lee statue, gaze into the colored supportive expressions on Lee's base, sit and watch a basketball game, read a book from the library, hang out the cookout, sit and have lunch, dance. That's what I experienced here two weeks ago in COVID-safety activities in the shower and the towering Lee that I couldn't have imagined as a student trip in my past life. Next slide, please. Last year's first project for 6D visited then Lee Circle, being Project One. We participated in the International Design Ideas Competition, Monument Avenue, General Demotion, General Devotion. This competition is run by Middle Abroad Studio, VCU Arts, Valentine Museum, all collaborating with us. Competition asked for an inclusive rethinking of the 5.4-mile connector and tributary of Confederate legacy. You can see some of the ideas here. After the, looking at the empathic design influences, Kay Alexander looked at taking the statues away and putting in these amazing solar moments that lower CO2 emissions based on Virginia dogwood flowers. Brandon DeMan very appropriately melted the Confederate monuments. Lauren Brown talked about bringing the African-American tradition of home goings, but also thinking about the materials and the architecture of them within the avenue. And Andre Hirschler was completely right. As you can look at the image there and think about what's there now in the space, thinking that the artistic expressions on the statues themselves. Paper Monument Charlottesville was last fall's Project Two, sustaining the collaboration from the School of Architecture and INE efforts, continuing with Sue Mobley to combine public art, history with empathic design. We wanted to create new collective narratives, symbols here. The erasure, absence, no more. We follow the guidance, values of equity, integrity, and collaboration Sue established, identifying the people, places, movements, and events following the format of Paper Monuments: New Orleans. You can see the three sites we're going to look at today, and the full class is shown of 20 throughout the city. For example, Julia Magenheimer's work details student activism of the 1960s at UVA, describing students for a democratic society and the student coalition, drafting 11 demands to then-President Shannon, including increases to Black student enrollment, a Black dean of admissions, and a Black studies program. Julie continues to share the activism of the 1970s, James Robuck, who was the first African-American Student Council president, and the large-scale protests following a US expansion to Cambodia, and the killing of four students by National Guard troops at Kent State. Julie's Paper Monument continues to share the strikes, teach ends, and callings for UVA's police disarming with the end of defense research, calling for equal admission of women and 20% Black enrollment. Julie planned to integrate into the rotunda- Julie planned to integrate into the rotunda steps during events, posting in connected spaces. Next slide, please. I want to thank the students who produced the impeccable thoughtful work you will see tonight, and it's also in the digital gallery. You can see the link at the bottom there, I believe, or our photo. In the class, I looked to Hale Woodruff for inspiration, a round Black artist and educator, also member of the Spile Group with Ramair Bearden and Emma Amos. The group inspired our work as the collective explored the relationship between art and activism, and how Black artists should relate to American society in the time of segregation. Woodruff also stated that it's very important to keep your artistic level at the highest possible range in development, and yet make your work convey a telling quality in terms of what we are and who we are as a people. I believe this collaboration achieves this, and I thank Sue and Brian very much for this opportunity, also to the UVA Arts Council, from which we received funding to support the implementation of Paper Monuments here in town. And this is where I tell you that they would have been up by now, but our work is currently on hold due to the health pandemic. But yet, we plan to organize, print, install as soon as safety, safely possible, excuse me. I'm now pleased to shift to Omer and Lauren, who will give context on the work, followed by presentations by Omer, Lauren, and Tristan.
Thank you, Elgin, and thank you, Sue, and thank you, Sneha, and Jamie, as well as everyone else who's, I guess, attending today. But I guess in terms of looking at, I guess, this process of Paper Monuments, especially in Charlottesville, what we as students found to have been very, I guess, just interesting was the fact that, you know, we did find ourselves in this, I guess, a town Charlottesville that already had this history that, you know, I guess for the sake of kind of keeping, you know, the image and whatnot, you know, of this town, then other histories and whatnot have been, I guess, pushed out of the way. And then when it comes, I guess, you know, understanding, I guess, monuments, especially, let's say, in Virginia or in the South, is very interesting because it's, you know, the, I guess, the landmarks that, you know, we remember as individuals kind of represent who we are, but then, you know, on a grander scale, then these monuments then, in a sense, begin to reflect, you know, that society. So, I guess now looking at these Paper Monuments as this, I guess, form of, you know, I guess, creating a dialogue or even a resistance now against, you know, some of the monuments that we do see in Charlottesville, for example, it's been very powerful because, I guess, I mean, one, I guess, just the form and the medium of them being, you know, I guess, kind of these posters that would then be hung up. It was almost as if they were then kind of blended into the built environment, and they become these things that, you know, are then part of our everyday versus, you know, let's say, certain statues or other forms of representation that we then see with other monuments. Lauren, if you'd like to add anything, but.
Yes, I think Omar captured all of it perfectly. We made the collage here on the left. We were trying to reflect on everything we learned, both from everyone else's Paper Monuments, but also just reflecting on everything that has happened in the past year, and looking at a lot of the histories that have been silenced within Charlottesville and also at the wider level of the university. And as Professor Cleckley mentioned earlier, the map on the right is mapping out where all of our works are, me, Omar, and Tristan's works, as well as all of our classmates, with the more saturated yellow places being places that may be more familiar to some people on the call who aren't from Charlottesville. And while these Paper Monuments are dispersed, again, mostly throughout UVA's grounds, and some of them in the downtown mall and other areas, this is something that can have a wider impact since Charlottesville alone. The history of Charlottesville's role in white supremacy and racism goes larger than just the core of the university, which is something very important to touch on, but Omar will continue and talk about his Paper Monument to discuss.
All right, so the paper, or the, I guess, my proposal had been looking at the New Roots Coalition here in Charlottesville, Virginia. I mean, me kind of being the student that had transferred in, let's say, a year after the events of August eleventh and twelfth. I myself had already been very, you know, fearful, I guess, transferring, but, you know, once I'd got here, I'd begin to, I guess, find out more, I guess, about Charlottesville. One thing especially that I'd found, you know, interesting was that here in Charlottesville, or at least at UVA, we have the IRC, but then Charlottesville itself then had this IRC, which was the International Rescue Count, it was a council committee, co, committee, sorry, where, you know, they were pretty much helping, I guess, people from SIAs and refugees from all over, I guess, begin to resettle here in Charlottesville. And I guess one of the projects they had been working on was this New Roots Farm that's located in Azalea Park. Sneha, if you could go to the next slide, please. I guess, but as you can see, it was located very much, I guess, to the south of Charlottesville, which I found had been an issue because now it was already kind of very excluded from the rest of the city. So this, I guess, Paper Monument was meant to be, I guess, one, highlighting this program, New Roots, in which, I guess, these different families from all over were then, you know, collectively now gardening, which I had found to be, I guess, very, I guess, moving. Because one, you know, it already creates this, I guess, communal thing where everyone is together, but then through the gardening, you then began to learn about, I guess, all the different places that people were then coming from. So I actually found myself doing two Paper Monuments in a sense, where, Sneha, could you? Next one, please, sorry. Where, you know, there, there had been, I guess, kind of these two, I guess, monuments, or one was more kind of looking at already what was happening with, you know, the New Roots Farm out in Azalea Park. But then the other Paper Monument was looking more at, I guess, proposing for a farm or a garden to have been placed in the, actually, UVA campus so that, you know, students could actually then begin to engage with the rest of the community, which is already, I guess, a problem that we do face.
Yes, thank you, Omar. So, and I also want to thank Omar and all of those attending the session today. I stumbled across Professor Cleckley's sixty class in search of an extra elective my third year, but I never realized that this class would profoundly shape my perception of, perception of, and my role in the built environment. The emphasis on empathy and the need for spaces that more critically engage users to confront the difficult histories of our country created some of the most profound dialogue I've had in my architecture education with students of many diverse backgrounds, ethnically and academically. My Paper Monument sought to create a larger dialogue around the university's purposeful architectural silencing of the free Black community known as the Little Canada Community, adjacent to Jefferson's Academical Village. This community began in eighteen thirty-three, when a free Black woman named Catherine Foster purchased an initial tract of land where the South Lawn complex lies today. From its founding to the early nineteen hundreds, Little Canada served as a home for many of the university's free Black workers. Move to the next slide, Sneha. Thank you. While the university acknowledges the presence of Little Canada on a one-acre site adjacent to now Hall on the South Lawn, students who commute through the site on a daily basis do so without acknowledging the abstract, oh, sorry, do so without acknowledging the abstract history that lies within the site and the complex history of Catherine Foster and the university's role in the narrative of race within the school. My proposed monument is a critique to this abstract memorial and seeks to create a series of Paper Monument murals whose visual styles mimic the vibrant culture that lied behind Old Cabal Hall. So this is pictures of the existing memorial that lies on the site, and the picture of the people that is in this picture are actually the descendants of Catherine Foster. And I live actually very close to the site, so I walk through it almost every day, and I notice how a lot of people don't acknowledge the space, and I wanted my Paper Monument to serve as a way to further activate the site. Um, next slide, Sneha. Although the residents of, oh, sorry, although the residents of Little Canada played a crucial role in the daily lives of white male students, professors, and their families at the university, the community's present, I'm sorry, the community's presence at the university was an eyesore that led to the eventual development of Old Cabal Hall to close off the lawn to, on its south end. My site collage seats to explore the racial and spatial hierarchies created within the lawn and the South Lawn complexes. The photographs used are a compilation of historic university images from the university's Special Collections Library and images from nineteenth-century African Americans from the Charlottesville community. The table of seated men at the university reiterates the spatial hierarchy on the lawn, with the rotunda at the head of the table and Black laborers standing, standing out of focus in the back. The figure with flowers over her head, oh, sorry, go back. The figure with flowers over her eye seeks to represent Miss Catherine Foster, whose identity is hidden since there's no known pictures of her. Her image is shattered to represent how her story and her role in Little Canada is broken and seen as a lesser importance to the narrative of Old Cabal Hall. Next slide. The purple poche in the map pictured outlines the boundaries of the former Little Canada community. While my Paper Monument mural sought to be located at the transit stop across from the existing memorial, which is represented by a very tiny dot on this map, I wish for it, for it, as well as other murals and monuments of this series, to be displayed across the boundaries of this purple poche to recontextualize these spaces with the vibrant Black history behind them. Next slide, please. After conducting the site research collage and mapping, I came to my final Paper Monument design. I saw the importance of painting a one-to-one mock-up of the poster by hand to represent the skilled labor and craft in which many of the free people of color within Little Canada produce for the university community. In the same sense, the handcraft is also a mechanism for empathy, for the audience is not only drawn to the vibrancy of the mural, but to the crafted quality of the piece. The main system used in the production of this piece is a play of layering and arrangement on the foreground and background composition. The hierarchy of space and figure created in the painting seems to reflect the hierarchy of the perceived space of the time. Although the spatial hierarchy is created, I still want Catherine Foster to be the main foreground image in the mural, which inverts the hierarchy that currently exists in the space. The figure of Catherine Foster was compiled from a series of photographs of her contemporaries within Charlottesville, since there are no known photos of Miss Foster. This project taught me a great amount about my own craft and my own history as a Black woman attending University of Virginia. I want to thank Professor Cleckley and Miss Mobley for introducing myself and my class to this phenomenal project and how our individual craft as designers has the capability to amplify, amplify the marginalized and silent voices within Charlottesville and beyond.
Hi, everyone. I want to thank my fellow panelists and everybody joining us today to start. So I came to sixty as an engineering student with an interest in kind of design and architecture, and I found this project, this choice to kind of dive into a specific piece of Charlottesville history, to be quite enlightening. So half of my family is from Charlottesville, but it's always remained a place whose history felt more distant in a way. And I chose for my Paper Monument here to showcase the Burley High School Licensed Practical Nursing Program, which ran from about nineteen fifty-two to nineteen sixty-six. During that program, during the beginning at least, especially, the all-black Burley High School allowed seniors to take classes at the University of Virginia and then do further training at the UVA Hospital in order to become a licensed practical nurse. This is quite important because during the time, the US was facing a major shortage of nurses, and they needed both the labor and the skill involved in nursing to continue. Now, throughout this time of training these nurses, they were keynote figures in desegregating the hospital, but they were also not recognized by the University of Virginia for, for their efforts, and they were not recognized as alumni either. And this was largely done to protect, to protect the image of white prestige that the university wished to put on. In fact, my great-grandmother, Maude Boykin, was one of the graduates of this program, which is why I chose it and found it to be an interesting venture in both history and understanding. Featured in my Paper Monument are both images of, the images that are available of the graduating classes of these nurses. Mind you, throughout that entire period of fourteen years, there were numerous people who graduated from this program, and yet, in the bottom right, during UVA's twenty nineteen recognition of these nurses, only twenty-five people were formally recognized. So thinking about those names that are lost to what is considered our formal understood history, I find kind of despicable in a way, but I think that there are many people who are fighting to try to make sure that those people are recognized, and for that purpose, I wanted to showcase the names of all of the Black women who served as, as those who were recognized and had to face the trials and tribulations of desegregating a state institution. On the right is an image from the Burley High Yearbook from nineteen sixty-five, which oddly enough was titled Reflections, to kind of focus on the idea that we need to be reflecting on a lot of these ideas. And next slide, please. Yeah, and then this is mostly just showcasing where exactly I would want to be putting the Paper Monument, which enters, I'd kind of write along the entrance of where the health area of the university is, not necessarily the health system, but where a lot of students take classes, while also ensuring that it remains visible in area, in an area that is directly connected to student activity and student life, as well as building a direct connection to the Memorial for Enseve Laborers, which stands right behind it. Yeah, and that's all for mine. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you, Elgin, Sue, Omar, Lauren, and Tristan. We can now go ahead and take a few questions. I haven't had a chance to take a look at the chat, if there are any that are already in the chat. Otherwise, please feel free to type in a set of questions, perhaps in the Q and A. If we don't have anything quite yet, I'd be happy to start with a question. I thought one of the things that was really interesting that Sue brought up was that even beyond the work itself and the posters, one of the things that was most impactful in the project was the specific narratives that came through in the proposals. One of the other things that seems really critical is the way in which the actual project can bring people together in the making of a public space, so literally putting together collectively the posters up over the course of a period of time, and in a way, it reminds me of Omar's proposal of the garden and the kind of collective space that that creates in the action of putting something up. So in thinking forward a little bit about the realization of Paper Monuments Charlottesville, I'm curious if you guys have some ideas about how you'd want to bring the community together in the action of installing and creating a public space around these monuments.
Sure. Happy to respond. We were thinking that we would set ourselves up in a team that had worked and operated very similar to the class. Part of the idea was the funding from the Arts Council would therefore supply the consistence of equity, integrity, and collaboration that Sue set out. The idea is that we would come up with a work plan and then connect back with Sue and say, are we, is this feeling the right direction? Are we headed the right direction? But a lot of that also would be supported by the community engagement that already exists here in town. I think one of the great things that we benefit from is, as I mentioned, and also what you see happening in town is that there's a huge support mechanism from the Equity Center, from the university, from community, that would help us stabilize and make sure that we were being consistent, also making this community connected. With that as well, the team would consist of students from the same class, and so you've got this incredible connection of that personal story, the narrative that you want to bring in, but also how that would connect then to actually the placement out in the field. And that's my hope. I don't want to say a date clearly, obviously, but my hope is that we can go and progress that very same and similar way. Plus, I'm so excited for us to do that because could there ever be a time now to do this work and we can move forward? It's amazing to think from then to now and thinking about how we can move forward, also supporting the efforts happening in the city and ourselves.
So I might start with a question, the Q and A by Danielle, which follows up a little bit on that question, which is, when the posters are install, will, installed, will there be a process for collecting public feedback and reflections?
Definitely. That was something we wanted to design. We were really. Definitely. That was something we wanted to design. We really admired the process from New Orleans. And the idea was to have an open platform to get those stories back, but also thinking about making it public, that not only would you see the poster, we'd have many different operations to see and understand this narrative. And so imagine that you could basically fall through in a gallery, get those stories, and also contribute. Ideally, and my dream space would be to have this idea too, where you can post your own narratives and say where you'd like to see your story, or where that location would be.
The next question is for the students. Has working on paper monuments changed your outlook, approach to practice and design as you move into your careers?
I can go first. I would say definitely yes. Before I studied architecture, I came into looking at studying architecture from the background of art. So doing visual art and making was something that was very important to me. And I feel like paper monuments really reiterated the amplification that visual arts can have in society and the role that art can play to make social change. And I feel like oftentimes when I thought of architecture, I sometimes think of it separate as like, you know, the visual arts that we always engage ourselves in. But I think paper monuments really made me realize that, you know, the conversations and ways that art can evoke empathy and conversation mutually can be done in a built space in terms of one's spatial experiences for how they navigate a space, or even encountering these visual mechanisms and the way that they interact with a set architectural space. So I would indeed say yes, this is all the more motivated me to continue my work, both in visual arts, but also continue to use my design work in the platform I have within the Architecture School at UVA, and hopefully in graduate school, and in the future, to use my work as a platform to try to engage in conversations and create conversations about race and space and marginalized and silenced voices in the built environment, and having them better be recognized by society as a whole.
I can also add that I think that, especially given that my design background as a whole isn't necessarily the largest, right? I think that the course 6D in particular, especially paper monuments, emphasized this deep understanding of history and this deep use of design as a method of critique, a method of understanding, and a method of learning. And just developing the fact that like history is a communal act, and that we are all, everything that we do is always a communal act. And a lot of times, everybody gets wrapped up in like being an individual, and then the individual does this, that, and the other. When in reality, I've noticed that even during the class, when we were working together or seeing other people produce their work, and then using that to reflect on our own and kind of develop and be better. And I think that just keeps going back to like our own families, the place that we live, our friends, and kind of underscoring that through its connection with design and kind of understanding the human element behind it all.
I mean, already Lauren and Tristan have answered this question so well. But I mean, personally, for me, what I found to be, I guess, interesting is that, one, I mean, already doing this project, it was pretty much, I guess, the closest thing to like an actual, let's say, like real-life situation versus, you know, some of the, I guess, other, you know, briefs and whatnot that were kind of given in, I guess, architecture school. But then not only that, it also then just showed us how we are now and then able to actually, you know, as Lauren mentioned, this dial, I actually have, you know, discourse now, you know, within the built environment that we all live in, a built environment that has historically been known to have only, you know, certain voices, where, you know, it's like only the, I guess, the, what is it, the victor, you know, gets to write this history, or, you know, only the, let's say, the surveyor, the cartographer gets to, you know, map out this place. So it's, I mean, it's not like, no, you know, it's not only them.
Thank you. So the next, there's a couple of questions for Sue. We'll start with Cheryl Harry, who asks, how were the 1,200 stories collected in New Orleans and where do they reside now?
So we collected people's proposals by tabling at transit stops, libraries, rec centers, but also going to community meetings and union meetings, political organizing rallies, and cultural events all over the city, as well as a lot of classrooms and particularly college classrooms. The written documents of the proposals live at the Midloth Center for New Orleans Studies at the University of New Orleans, which is our public university. And the digital versions should be up soon on the Louisiana Digital Library, so that they're accessible to all researchers.
And then a follow-up question from Kelly is, how could we make these stories accessible for younger kids?
So one of the things that we found through the process of doing paper monuments is that we were often getting questions about lexile level from teachers, and specifically concerns about accessibility and lexile level, given that our adult population has a literacy rate of about 68%. It is worth mentioning that those concerns were mostly raised by white teachers who had come to New Orleans post-storm, once the teachers' union had its back broken by the state and was dissolved after Katrina, and our schools were largely privatized. It is a legitimate concern. It's also a contextual concern. At our largest gallery at Canal and Elk, we were approached by a man who worked as a street cleaner for the Downtown Development District, who had been using the posters. He'd appointed himself docent of our gallery. He'd been using the posters to teach students on their way to school, as well as anybody who would hold still long enough to listen, not just the story of the showdown at the Desire Projects between the Black Panthers and NOPD, but also all of the other posters, because he'd read them. And he had looked up the words that he didn't know and taught them to himself and was then teaching them to others. Lexile level isn't a concern to me. Accessibility is. And that's often where access to additional materials and curriculum construction become really vital tools to expanding the numbers of stories, the types of stories that our kids are given access to. Understand that Jeff School is doing a lot of great work doing that in Charlottesville.
Thank you, Sue. I'm going to combine two questions. Maybe this first might be directed to Elgin, and then also the students may have some more to add. The first is from Frank Dukes, and he asks, what are the next steps? No different than what Sue usually gets as her next question. What will be built, when building is possible, and what learning will be next for each of you? And then I'd like to combine that actually with Dean Berman's question, where she recognizes Sue's presentation on paper monuments in New Orleans show the potential of the next highly impactful stage of work for the longer-term transformation of public space in the city through street names and other efforts. Has there been discussion about the next stage of this project that might have a long-term impact on public space in Charlottesville?
Sure. Thank you. First question for Frank about what will be built and what's possible. What's really been great in early conversations we had with the team was to think about strategic locations. And for instance, if we did have to build, say, a frame to mount a paper monument on, this is something I think we talked about over there at one point for yours, we would do so. The idea, the funding would really support the structure, but the structures would be a product of us working, collaborating together with organizations, leaders, with ourselves, to think about what's appropriate and what's there. For the learning, I can also say that I learned in every conversation. I think what's great about this is it's expansive. So questions like next steps make me very excited, and that means that we're engaged and we're knowing and understanding how design can be so powerful in this space. To Dean Berman's question as well here, the idea of public space, the impacts, and how this can support, I'm really excited about how it can support, looking at statues that will be coming down. I think it will be an incredible way first to think about what would go in those spaces. And I think following a model of what's happening at Marcus David Peters Circle is really a way to start. I think the best way to think about that, too, is to organize an environment, just as what we've created here, to think about those ideas, and to be really open, and to also invite invitational across the board to really use design as this mechanism, as we've modeled here, to think about the sites. And we've got lots of that here in town. Clark, Lee, Jackson, the At-Ready statue. Design could be this leader to show us what's possible, to make sure we've got all the narratives covered. One of the clear things you see at Court Square is the lack of the narratives being told or said in that space, which really is what came out the mark by monuments by Dr. Jelaine Schmidt and also Dr. Andrea Douglas in connection with the Jefferson Center. So making sure that those are connected and using paper monuments as a way to connect with that, I think, would be incredibly powerful.
Any others like to weigh in on that question?
I can, I guess, for the last part of Mr. Duke's question about what learning will be for the next, for what learning will be next for each of us. I know, like, for, I'm in my fourth year at UVA, so I'm beginning to think about topics for my thesis. And I know that I want my thesis to kind of be along the same lines of reclaiming space and architecture, but actually thinking about how space can be claimed spatially. So in terms of the conversations that are brought up by paper monuments and how you can reclaim a space in terms of visual art, I want to try to begin engaging with what scholarship exists for, like, how that's being done in the built environment, and then what can be done so that that becomes a precedent for how we approach a lot of spaces within the built environment that were designed to be inherently racist and exclude, I'm sorry, exclude people of color and other marginalized identities within the United States, in particularly is where I'm wanting to look at. But it's a case that applies to multiple countries and cultures throughout the world. So I'm hoping to engage more into this topic and this research in my own thesis project.
Olivia asks, how has this relearning and revealing of the university's history reframed your understanding or relationship with the pre-existing built environment, for example, the Academical Village? Has it changed what you think the rotunda symbolizes? Or if it hasn't, why?
I can share. So I would say that it hasn't changed my idea of what the rotunda symbolizes, but it has made it more clear. I mean, even coming to the university, I remember, of course, coming here in the wake of the United the Right Rally was a feeling in and of itself. But then adding into that, the kind of feeling that you get when you walk through the Academical Village, or like through the gardens by the serpentine walls, there's a feeling in all of that that I could never put my finger on, and always felt strange. Something about the organization of Charlottesville felt strange. And then I had the opportunity to learn about that and to have a path to kind of validate those feelings and kind of learn about how things were constructed and the intentions behind certain choices, and the implications that that has on both myself and other people.
Yeah, I agree with Tristan. Like, it just, I feel like, made it all the more clear. When I came to UVA, I know when I toured, I was like enamored by like the rotunda and like the beauty of the lawn. And I didn't really understand a lot of the history of it. I was just like, oh, columns, oh, the rotunda stairs, so beautiful. And it wasn't until I got to UVA that I began to understand more about the history, both in like communication with like other black students at the school. And I began to notice that, like, the lawn just felt different for me. And a lot of my peers, they just didn't feel as welcomed in that space as a lot of my white peers did. And it never really made much sense to me. And then as I took classes and as I learned more about Jefferson's complex history with race and slavery, both at this university, in a wider sense, it just became, it was very interesting, because when I began engaging with the architecture and engaging with these spaces he designed, it really did give me a different lens and perception to look at it. The summer after my first year, I had the privilege of working at Jefferson's Retreat Home at Poplar Forest. So that was his case where on a daily basis, I had to know more about Jefferson than I probably would like to have known. But it was interesting learning all the interesting conversations that came about the narrative of Poplar Forest and the role that slaves had in terms of constructing the actual site, and so many other things. So I feel like all the more paper monuments and learning about these other histories just makes me kind of appreciate that hidden history even more. And I do look at the rotunda differently than I did when I toured UVA, but I feel like it's a more enriched way of understanding that history that has more parties and voices involved.
I guess just to add, it's, I mean, it's been interesting, because, I mean, we, you know, when we look at, I guess, kind of, I guess, the history of Charlotte, or even when we do study the Academical Village, the way it's then historically been romanticized and, you know, idealized constantly. But then now, you know, when we do unearth these things about, you know, what was really, I guess, going on, it kind of reminds me of like when a person takes an image, right? And let's, I'm just going to start talking in photographer terms, but you know, when you take an image at, you know, let's say a certain F-stop, or you know, let's say, you're only allowed to focus on certain things, right? And then what's interesting is that, you know, let's say, as more light comes into that scene, your setting, you're then able to, you know, turn that F-stop higher so then less and less things begin to blur. So you're finally able to, you know, have your F-stop, let's say, you know, at 22 or infinite, and then you actually get to see everything then in focus. So I feel like that's kind of, I guess, that's been my goal now in terms of, you know, actually trying to understand, you know, the Academical Village and, I guess, the history of Jefferson or UVA. Not, I guess, kind of, you know, I guess, kind of completely changing the history, but then actually being able to, I guess, take the history that we've been kind of given, but then, you know, taking the things that have now been, let's say, not, you know, spoken about or, you know, in conversation before, and being able to, you know, put them together to then understand that bigger image, if that makes sense, but.
Okay, so just a couple more questions. How do you see or hope individuals would respond to the paper monuments, particularly if they're challenging dominant narratives? I'm curious if you've seen differences in individual responses to how communities might respond.
I can say that I'm smiling a bit, because I think sometimes your existence is, challenges a dominant narrative. So just by living in certain ways. On the other hand, it's storytelling, storytelling connected to who you are. And once that's out, I think sometimes when people are challenged, that means that you're on the road possibly to rethinking how you see the world, the world around you. If we're not challenged, are we really seeing, understanding the layers? I also think maybe that it's a bit of redefining what the term challenge means. A lot of this is to say and share a personal story that connects. And so I see paper monuments as a beautiful moment to tell those personal stories, which tell you things that you know, or maybe they connect you or connect you to the land. And we see clearly now in Charlottesville what that means. Decisions you're making now with the statues are connected to the Decisions you're making now with the statues are connected to the idea of telling true, accurate narratives, opening those narratives to understand what we're seeing, what we're experiencing, what's in our landscapes.
Thank you. The last question here are, the projects presented, shared yet publicly. I'd love to be able to share it with our Inclusive Excellence Team and Diversity Committee at UVA. And great to see what research and wonderful work is being done. So I'd like to actually just go ahead. In the chat, I'm going to share the gallery link, which will let you all have a chance to see all of the proposals that the students put together, in addition to the three that were presented today. Elgin, if you have anything else that you may want to add about, again, sort of, maybe next steps in terms of other venues where the work will be shared publicly?
Definitely. We'd be more than happy to connect with the Inclusive Excellence Team and Diversity Committee, also through my connection with the Design Director at the Equity Center. We'll definitely be planning to structure a larger event and also carry this forward, once it's safe and possible.
Thanks so much. So I know that Dean Berman would like to say hello, but I think one of the things that's really nice that maybe the attendees or even the panelists don't have such an insight into as we're working through these strange virtual means, is just to hear the great feedbacks. So I'd like to just share some of that before we pass it on to Isla. So some of the things that were said, just that the work was fascinating. Thank you all for sharing the work, watching with respect and awe and love. Thank you for sharing the beautiful, inspiring work. This is awesome. Truly inspiring and wonderful work. We don't usually get this many, so this is something to share. Incredible work. Can't wait to see these come to life around grounds and in Charlottesville. Thanks for the terrific presentation, the fantastic and thoughtful work. Love this. Great job, everyone from Brooklyn. These were all very lovely, thoughtful, and compelling invitation. Thank you for the inspiring, well-crafted contributions. And especially beautiful and powerful work inspired by the approach, commitment, and vision. Looking forward to continued and deeper conversations of history and place in Charlottesville.